I'm gonna call this meeting of the city council at the fifth floor chambers being March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, six P. M. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Item two invocation will be given to us by Pastor Marco Zuniga from Kingdom Church, followed by the pledge allegiance Texas pledge by council member Vasquez. Those who are wishing to join us in prayer can do so by standing up and join us in prayers. Pastor Zuniga here? He's not here. Nope. He must be running late. Does anybody want to be voluntold to lead us in prayer? How about you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Grove? There you go. President of the ODC can do that. You're a pastor for tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you. Heavenly fathers, thank you so much for a beautiful evening. Just thank you for the opportunity to come together as a community and just do the business of the city. Thank you for the leaders that sit up here on this dais to make decisions in our best interest each and every month, and for the betterment of our city. We just ask you to be with them tonight. Give them the patience, give them the knowledge and the wisdom that they need to to lead us in the right direction. Lord, we just love you and we praise you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, sit down. We have no proclamations. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of his agenda items before during the consider uh consideration of the item. Uh, anyone that's wishing to make any comments on non-agenda items can do so by coming forward stating your name, and only your full name. You can do so by coming forward now. I ask the council to overlook the consent agenda. And while you're doing that, council, will you consider we need a consideration for a motion to pull item? Item seven, consider adoption of the revised master therfor plan. So, as you review that, I need a motion by council for consideration to remove this item.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Thompson to remove item seven from the consent agenda. Second by council member Mata, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passes. We have removed item seven from the consent agenda. Council, overlook the consent agenda, and then I will entertain a motion for approval.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by council member to accept the consent agenda as um as presented with the changes of item seven removed. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by council member Vasquez, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passes. You can ask me, consent agenda is passed. First item to consider on this city council in the dais is item seven, consider adoption of the revised master therfor plan. Let's to Kurt.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Thank you.
For consideration on the discussion on the item. Um, I think we came up with a um a miscommunication from uh with regard to what the council really wanted on on this item. But in the previous meeting, staff was under the impression that what we call scenario three was was the selection. Uh, scenario three, and I can pass these out if you need, but in scenario three, Dawn still existed uh north of sixty-first, but as a collector, a three-lane roadway. And then sixty-first street would still exist to the west of Dawn, uh probably as a collector. Could be a residential, but uh it would no longer be an arterial or a five-lane. Those were the options, all of the options had sixty-first continuing to the west to the county line. It or adjacent to the county line. It would not continue beyond that point. And so um uh we were under the impression, at least what you have for tonight's approval would be that sixty-first would still proceed that way. And um I'm not sure that that's what you intended or not, so I wanted to make sure and check and see.
Okay. Council, uh, discussion.
Well, I think we, I think with Mr. Lee's, uh, I think he stopped talking to him and the council on the Swaners talked to him. He was expecting just from Dawn to going east. I mean Dawn, I mean sixty-first going east uh is a five-lane road. I think that's where we left it, and I thought that's what we'd agreed to, if I'm not, if that's the way you guys remember it. So that's it. I mean, he goes to, he doesn't go to, it's a road to nowhere. It it's, I mean, I understand the reliever, but the way it's explained to me is that if if we go to the west, then there's gotta be a job to get back to go out to Grandview, so that could cause some traffic problems.
And and so I did add one, uh, we were, uh, received a draft proposal. It's uh still under draft and uh it's on the, it's the last sheet on what I passed around. And so that is a consideration for development of the area to the west uh that that is being considered by the developer. I don't mean to imply something or otherwise.
Which page is that?
Last one.
The last one.
That sheet. It's not one of the, right. Uh, after scenario four, there should be. It doesn't, it's not colored, it's uh black and white, I think, entirely. So you'll see from that, um, there's a roadway, and I don't know that I held a copy, but there's a roadway coming. Um, Dawn is coming up from the south and then turns east with sixty-first street. And that dawn's kind of in the middle area, um, on the lower area. Now, to the west, uh, you will see dawn does not, I mean, the sixty-first does not extend. And uh, there's a roadway slightly south of there that's a residential road. And so most of the area to the west will, or or a portion of the area to the west is gonna drain down into that roadway if they're wanting to come to Dawn or Grandview to go north.
Is that what you have in red that's the drainage?
Uh, the the red is actually some alternate or additional connection points that they may be proposing.
Roadways?
Let me see if I can.
So that's a thirty-foot drainage easement that's running east and west?
Right, the drainage easement that's running east and west is where sixty-first would have been.
It's gonna drain into at least more, three-point forty-one acres to the west, right, on the county line?
Right. That that drainage easement is where sixty-first would have existed in other scenarios. Um, and so the the properties to the west would mostly drain, or when I say drain, I mean, people would drive down to that roadway um that is just slightly south. You've got kind of a uh dogleg connection there, I guess would be the term. You've got an offset intersection. Sixty-first comes into Dawn, and it's slightly along Dawn is another residential roadway that goes to the west. And uh, that's the scenario without sixty-first street and uh, and they don't show Dawn Avenue. And I don't know that that's an issue at all going north.
So the last city council meeting, we had, I thought we had adopted scenario three. Did you see it that same way?
Yes.
Yes.
And when you look at.
Scenario three, I don't think we realized where it extended all the way down from sixty-first to the county.
There's a slight, we didn't draw it all out because we didn't know exactly how these lots were gonna line out and everything else, but you'll see a slight pink line there, just kind of a square going west of Dawn. And it's got, and engineers, that broken line, it's got a line with a little hickey in it, whatever. Um, that means to us means it goes, continues, but um.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Yeah, I see, I see it now.
I didn't know either. I just knew we agreed to do away with that part of it.
So, what action are we needing to take tonight? You know, we we adopted scenario three. I think there was some confusion about sixty-first going out to west Odessa. We're understanding it was stopping right here in this scenario three illustration.
Okay.
So what do we, is there something that we need to amend?
So, in layman's terms, can we just adopt this without the hickey on that?
Right, so what we can, right. If if you tell me that you want to not continue sixty-first west and and you don't wanna, because uh, is it, and you don't wanna continue Dawn north of sixty-first, then we will revise this and bring it back to you. It's it's, it doesn't have to hold the developer up because they should understand the intentions. Uh, we just need to formally have you change it.
Under the uh assumption that we were still extending sixty-first out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's how they wrote it up?
Yeah, we 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 looked at scenario three. Our understanding was that sixty-first would still exist up to, not not crossing the county line. But uh, and that Dawn would go up to the north as a collector. Because that's kinda the way scenario three was conceived, at least in our discussions. It doesn't have to be that way.
Okay, so the blurb says here is consider modifying the master therfor plan based on recent development changes. Those development changes would consist of scenario uh scenario three that would dead-end sixty-first street to the west as proposed by these plans or engineering.
Are you looking at House, uh, one for tonight?
So basically, it's written up in here, and how it's presented on the agenda is consider modifying the master therfor plan based on recent development changes. Those development changes is is that sixty-first street would dead-end going to the west uh at Dawn. Is that correct?
Uh, no, that's not the way this is written.
Okay.
Um, it says sixty-first street, Dawn Avenue to west city limits, west city limits. Uh, downgrade from a minor arterial to a collector.
Okay. Somebody get that?
Yeah. Yeah, got it.
All right, so we need a motion. Does anybody want to speak on this, Larry? You wanna come up here and say anything you get? Anybody want to speak on this? Okay.
And so, Don, just to be clear now, sixty-first from Dawn will be a five-lane therfare to the east, correct?
Yes, yes, it is. It's drawn up that way in the master therfor plan. So, um, I don't know that whether you need to deny this one, and I bring you back a revised one, uh, but with the direction that you.
So basically, what we're doing is we are not gonna prove item seven.
Correct.
As presented.
But it's not gonna hold the developer.
Shouldn't hold the developer.
You'll have a revision in two weeks.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Good. All right, so do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion to um.
I move to uh not approve.
Yeah.
Number, item, item seven.
Second.
So we have a motion and not approving as presented, the consideration modifying the master therfor plan based on recent development changes. By councilman Mata, I have a second by councilman Thompson, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to item ten, consider amending the Odessa City Code, chapter one through seven relating to board commissions and committees. Ms. Grimaldo.
Thank you, mayor and council. This item would be to add the Ector County Odessa Joint Airport Zoning Board to the Code of Ordinances. In the Code of Ordinances, we have a listing of all the boards that the city has, so it would just include it into the list. It's just a general housekeeping item.
Are the appointees together staggered every two years?
It does not state in the resolution how those term limits are established.
Of course it would. This is back in nineteen fifty-eight. Revised in nineteen eighty-six.
Eighty-six, yeah.
So these appointees are perpetual.
For the time.
For the time being, okay. So we have um item ten, consider amending the Odessa City Code, chapter one through seven relating to the boarding commissions committee. This goes back to the Ector County Odessa Joint Airport Zoning Board to be added to the Code of Ordinances. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion by council member Swaner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by coun- council, council member Cornell?
Mr. Cornell.
Yes.
Mr. Cornell's access.
You're certain on the law, so that's a little prejudice.
I'll second. So I have a second by council member Vasquez. Uh, Mr. Cornell serves on the board and cannot um vote on this. So we have a um motion by council member Swaner, second by council member Vasquez, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, five to uh, five to zero. We're gonna move on to miscellaneous and have a Casey Hallmark H R investigation presentation presented by Tommy Sheen. Mr. Sheen?
Mayor, I do not see Tommy Sheen here. Uh, I don't know where he's at. He was supposed to be in here by six.
Okay. Nobody's heard from him? Can anybody make him, does anybody have a number? Give him a call, see if he is on his way. Well, I'm gonna, let's wait five minutes, see if we can get that number. Let's give him a call, see if he's gonna present, not, not, we can table this and move forward.
Okay. Hang on, let me go make a phone call.
Absolutely.
Counsel, if you would like, we can handle the appointment of boards if y'all wish.
Uh, okay, so. Let's wait. No, we'll, we'll wait.
Oh, yeah, and I even want to change shirts to. Make them quicker.
It's got cold in here, that's for sure.
Sixty-six degrees. Perfect.
I had my down counter in my bed.
Have a parka on, it would be all right.
Play Jeopardy, play Jeopardy. Check steak. Mayor, heat is about fifteen minutes away. So we're gonna recess, or you can suspend the rules and go on to work.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna suspend the rules, and we are going to uh jump over. We're gonna suspend the rules, and I have a motion by uh council member Thompson to suspend rules. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Mata, and we are going to jump over item eleven and go to item twelve, appointment of boards. Ms. Grimaldo.
For the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, reappoint council member Gilbert Vasquez. For the Board of Survey, reappoint Vicky Gomez. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, appoint Connie Coops, and that's for the mayor's appointment. And for the Tax Incentive Committee, reappoint Kevin Demille. And Mr. Demille represents the business, local business, on that board.
Okay, so item A, Gilbert Vasquez for animal, animal shelter, correct?
Yes.
B is Vicky Gomez Board of Survey?
Yes.
Planning and zoning will be Connie Coops?
Yeah, yes.
Kevin Demille for item of tax incentive committee?
Yes.
Okay, so we, uh, do we have a motion to appoint as presented by city secretary Grimaldo? Uh, Gilbert Vasquez, item A, Vicky Gomez, item B. Item E, Connie Coops, and item F, Kevin Demille. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by council member Swaner? Do I have a second? Second by council member Mata, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously.
We suspend for next fifteen minutes.
What I would do is just do a motion to recess for fifteen minutes.
So I'm gonna ask the council to uh recess for fifteen minutes as we await the arrival of Tommy Sheen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Mata, second by council member Swaner, to recess for fifteen minutes and read adjourn at the arrival of Tommy Sheen. All in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, by saying nay. Motion pan, uh, motion passes unanimously. We are recess until the arrival of the lawyer, Tommy Sheen.
Mayor, remember, we'll need to do a motion to come out.
Come back out of recess.
Mayor, doing construction.
Construction.
Now, while he's coming from Seminole, he's supposed to come from La Mesa.
Should have jumped over three eighty-five.
Yeah.
I never, I never go that way.
I don't go that.
Haven't got, I haven't gone that, I haven't gone down Brownfield Highway since nineteen sixty-seven.
I'll go to Seminole.
And I go up the plane and then over. Because Janice lived in Midland.
Never ever.
Yeah. Oh, you did okay. You did okay.
That's a lot of pledge.
Oh, we got a break.
How are you doing, son?
Good, how are you? You know, I've seen you.
East. Now, we see it, it's one point five, all the way to the west. That's probably eight thousand. One point five, yeah, east and west. It's cocky. Come down one point five, the airport. Goes to seventy-eight. Here. Yeah, you gotta do that. Well, that's true, right? Most, but most.
That's what he was, I wouldn't. I don't. They just, oh, go back to, just go back, hit seventeen.
Oh, no, I know. I wouldn't have been on, I wouldn't have been on that side of town.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have come in that way.
I know. I'm just teasing.
I apologize.
Uh, no problem.
No words.
It happens. I, people don't watch the paper, I, the same thing in Andrews. They've been working on that road. Now, who'd be lose? Like herding cats.
Yeah, I suppose that's sometimes and sometimes, yeah.
So I'll ask council to entertain a motion to uh come back out of recess.
So moved.
I have a motion by council member Vasquez, who have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Thompson, all in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing, indicating by saying nay. We're back in session. We're going to consider item eleven. Let me read it. Miscellaneous, item eleven, Casey Hallmark, H R investigation presentations and findings. Mr. Sheen? You have the podium, sir.
Thank you, mayor. May I approach?
Yes.
Yes, I brought.
We're not in court of law, sir.
I know, I'm just, I'm used to it.
Nobody will be held in contempt.
Prepared a report for everyone based on the investigation I conducted, so I'll just kinda go through that. Are you ready to proceed?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. I apologize first and foremost for being here a little bit tardy. Um, they're doing roadwork in Andrews and Seminole both, and I didn't realize.
We're, we're all giving you advice, which way you should have come.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate it. Okay. Um, this council uh hired me roughly two months ago to do an investigation into allegations that are made on the, on the record uh by one Ms. Casey Hallmark, uh former economic development director of downtown Odessa. In the course of the last two months, uh, I have endeavored to talk to um pretty much everyone that I could find that had any involvement or might have some knowledge regarding the allegations that were set forth in those meetings. And you can see on my first page of my report, I spoke with Ms. Hallmark, uh, councilman Mata, mayor Hovin, councilman Haney, and uh downtown Odessa board member Sean Rodriguez, John Harridge, uh, councilwoman Denise Swaner, uh, her husband Bobby Swaner, who was a witness uh to some of the allegations. Alexa Malakis, who uh worked with uh Ms. Hallmark and was named by Ms. Hallmark as a a witness to some of the allegations that were made. Uh, Alyssa Deutsch, who is the stepdaughter of councilman Haney, who was present for some of the allegations that were made. Charles Hirsch, and then uh Dan Jones. I wanna first start off with some of the allegations and what I've found uh with mayor Hovin, okay? Uh, as we're all aware, since you were there, um, three principal allegations came out of the council meeting. the council meeting, both council meetings, but I'm taking Ms. Hallmark's words directly for these allegations based on the statement that she gave under oath. All of these statements were recorded under oath. Copies are made, every witness was given the opportunity to review their statement, make any modifications that they may deem fit, and was asked to prevent, present any other documentation, emails, or any other information that they may find, or they may think might aid me in my investigation. During the course of her statement, Ms. Ms. Hallmark revealed that the source of her complaints stemmed from a, the first, the principal one, one of the first ones, a conversation that she alleges took place in February of twenty twenty-two. Shortly after she was hired, that she alleges that Mayor Hoven had, she alleges, several conversations with her around that time, wherein Mayor Hoven revealed to her over the course of a couple of our discussion, some, some things that have already been mentioned. She alleges that conversation is the source of the complaints that she has made regarding calling certain persons in the, in the public crooks, also the OPD alleging that they are murderers, and, and also recounting a story having to do with what she claims Mayor Hoven told her about the Odessa Police Department involve, involvement in, in a situation at west of town with what she characterized as a prostitute that was covered up. Her allegations were that the police injured some lady out west and that she was taken to a hospital here in town, that power went out and that lady passed away. Now, let's deal with that allegation because I see that as probably one of the most serious allegations that has been made. I talked to Mayor Hoven about this, he categorically denies that any of this, if any of this information was discussed in that meeting. He did reference that this meeting had some, some of the similarities that Ms. Hallmark had, had also mentioned in, when I talked to her about the substance of the conversation, not only just being that, but also a background on downtown Odessa, some of the events that he had been involved in over time, and his previous time as a city council member, and so the two conversations, I believe, are the same conversation because all of those elements are listed by both parties in that conversation. Now, obviously, it differs quite, quite substantially. Mayor Hoven has categorically denied that any of these things were mentioned. Now, where does that leave us? That leaves us with one side, on one side of the fence and one on the other. Ms. Hallmark identified a former coworker many of you may be familiar with, like I said, Alexa Malakis, who's no longer with downtown Odessa, she's with Odessa College, who many of you may remember was a, the acting executive director of downtown Odessa prior to Ms. Hallmark's taking that position. I interviewed her and asked her what she saw and what she heard. Ms. Malakis, Malakis relayed to me that she was present in the office the day of that conversation, that she was sitting within twenty feet of the doorway with an open door of this conversation, and that she was there for the entirety of the conversation, and that no mention was made, by her recollection, of any kind of impropriety by the Odessa Police Department, or of any kind of death of somebody out west, or of any kind of allegations that people within the city of Odessa, prominent people within the city of Odessa, were in fact crooks and could not be trusted, as has been alleged. Ms. Malakis also went on to go, to say that she never heard out of Mayor Hoven's mouth, "You need to watch your back," as has been alleged. That is the only witness that has been identified by any of the parties, other than the parties that are involved in the circumstance, they're in, in the allegation, okay? Ms. Malakis, like I said, is no longer with, with the city, she's with Odessa College. She did provide some other information, she's had some, she's had, obviously, with her position, being the prior acting executive director, she had many encounters with Mr. Hoven, or sorry, Mayor Hoven. She, she recounted to me, actually volunteered to me, that in her interactions with Mayor Hoven, he always treated her with respect and dignity, and that she, he always valued her opinion, okay? There are other parts that I'll leave to your, your, your reading on that, but as far as the investigation is concerned, no other documentation was provided by Ms. Hallmark or any other party that would shed any more light on this conversation that allegedly occurred in the substance matter thereof. And so, based upon the evidence of the statements that were taken, the, there is, I question the veracity of the statement based upon the independent eyewitness testimony of Ms. Malakis, okay? The next, the next allegation that was made by Ms. Hallmark against Ms., Mayor Hoven, was that he refused to shake her hand and said, quote unquote, "I will, I will be happy to accept your letter of resignation before the start of this council's meeting in February of twenty twenty-two." I endeavored to pull all of the, of the video footage of the meetings of twenty twenty-two and look through all of them. I did not see evidence of any discussion prior to a meeting involving Ms. Hallmark and the mayor wherein there was any indication of a, an unrequited handshake. However, to be fair, the video showing only goes up to these seats, so I can't say with absolute certainty that something like that didn't occur by the video evidence. All that we see is the dais, and most of the meetings begin with you guys saying the pledge, and so, I can't, the video evidence is not present to confirm or deny that on, on just the video evidence. Ms. Ms. Hallmark alleges that, that Mayor Hoven was going to talk to Dan Jones, who is seated on the, seated on the dais here today, and made these remarks. I have interviewed under oath Mr. Jones, and Mr. Jones does not recall ever hearing such a remark. To be fair, Ms. Hallmark did not attribute Mr. Jones as an eyewitness or someone standing right there, rather, she stated that, that it was her understanding that Mayor Hoven was on the way to talk to Mr. Jones. Again, Mayor Hoven denies this allegation, okay? Now, to be completely honest, which has been my mandate from this, from this very get-go, Alyssa Malak, I'm sorry, Ms. Malakis did state that Ms. Hallmark made a comment to her sometime after the February twenty twenty-two council meeting, meeting that that event did in fact occur. All, this would be considered hearsay in my world, however, it is there, and to be fair, that has been stated. However, what is abundantly clear by Ms. Hallmark's own testimony, as well as the testimony of the downtown Odessa board members, and also, well, I'll name them, Sean Rodriguez and John Harridge, as well as Charles Hurst and Ms. Hallmark herself, is that Mayor Hoven has no power to hire, fire, or discipline Ms. Hallmark. It's not in the ordinances of the city, it's not within the city handbook, he has no power to even carry out even such a threat. So, there is no concrete evidence one way or the other, it is a he said, she said on whether it happened, we have a piece of hearsay evidence from a third-party witness who heard sometime after from Ms. Hallmark that this occurred. Therefore, I cannot conclude one way or the other whether or not this in fact happened, but what I can conclude is that regardless of whether it happened or not, he, there's been no evidence of intent that has been put forward with respect to bullying Ms. Ms. Hallmark by this, this, this alleged comment, and then there is no enforcement power behind the mayor as far as either through the ordinances or, or through the, the city, the city rules that would allow him to, to, to discipline Ms. Hallmark. In fact, Ms. Hallmark confirmed that her direct report and the person who was responsible for hiring her or firing her was in fact the former city manager, as did the downtown direct, downtown Odessa directors. They also confirmed that they have no power to punish, hire, fire Ms. Hallmark. In fact, the only person that has that power was her immediate supervisor, who was Mr. Marrero. The third allegation, and they'll go faster after this, but these were pretty serious allegations, but the third allegation that, that, that Ms. Hallmark made was that she felt bullied because Mayor Hoven addressed her in council meetings by her husband's name, Williams, rather than her preferred name, Hallmark. There is evidence on the videos that that in fact was the case, that, that the mayor did in fact address her on more than one occasion as Williams, not Hallmark. However, what is also in evidence on the videos is that he, he quickly, most, most of the time corrected himself, and, and when I interviewed the mayor, I asked him why he would use the name Williams instead of Hallmark, and he said it's because I understood that she was married and that Williams was her married name, but that there was no negative connotation behind that, and he, he wasn't trying to prove a point or to bully her in any fashion. Ms. Hallmark perceived it as a bullying. Again, there has been no, there's been no evidence submitted by Ms. Hallmark or anybody else involved that I've talked to, including the mayor, that would suggest that the mayor had the requisite intent, or had the, the motive to bully Ms. Hallmark by calling her by Williams rather than Hallmark. Obviously, we're at another he said, she said, but I'm just telling you, the evidence that I've been able to gather is that she believes that it was some sort of bullying tactic, and he is, he has testified that it was in fact not, and it was an oversight on his part and not intentional. Therefore, I don't have enough evidence to conclude one way or the other whether or not that in fact was bullying. It is again a he said, she said situation. Now, obviously, based on, on the law, there has been no case law precedent recognized as a discriminatory act based upon what you call somebody's name, it's not a protected class. And so, again, under the law, I don't find anything that's actionable based upon the misnomer, the name, using the, the, her, her, her married name versus her preferred name. So, the next set of allegations involve Councilman Mark Mata. I, well, let me back up, before I left Ms. Hallmark and left the topic of Mayor Hoven, I, I asked her if there were any other complaints that she had that she would like to voice regarding her treatment or, or alleged treatment by the mayor, and she said no. So, those, that is the universe of the three complaints that she had against the mayor, okay? Moving, and I'll get to the conclusions at the end, but I want to make sure y'all have the facts. As far as Councilman Mata is concerned, the basis of her complaints against Councilman Mata stemmed from an email chain that was sent, and I've actually, in the back of your packet, there are copies of those emails. As some of, of you know, and maybe not all, there was, there was a disagreement prior to the twenty twenty-two Christmas parade about the proper term to describe council, council members, and there was an email to that regard. I believe Councilwoman Swanner did not want to be called a council person. Ms. Hallmark had ordered signs for, for everyone for the Christmas parade, and there was some email banter back and forth about the use of council person as a, as a, as a descriptor for everyone that was going to be in the parade versus council man or council woman. That's, that's just the lay of the predicate, there was no complaint necessarily lodged on that. However, that, that's in the background going on while the emails that are involved with the allegations that have to do with Councilman Mata is, is playing out. Essentially, according to Councilman Mata, he learned that, that Ms. Hallmark had become a, a friend of a site called Odessa Whistleblowers. And he learned that from, he thinks another council person, he thinks Ms. Swanner, but he's not a hundred percent certain. And the reason that matters is, once he was told to go and investigate the site, he found, as you will see in your packet, that this website was posting very rude, inappropriate, nasty allegations about Councilman Mata and some of the other council persons and the mayor. As a result of that, Councilman Mata sent an email to Ms. Hallmark, which is also included in this packet, that, that states, I want to make sure that I say this correctly. Quote, "It's very disappointing to see that you are quote unquote friends with a Facebook page, Odessa Whistleblowers, whose sole purpose is to try to discredit myself, council member Denise Swanner, and Mayor Javier Hoven. While you are free to do as you like on social media, I am also free to respond accordingly. I canceled a big race that I had entered to support you and DOI by being in the parade, which I now regret. I will still be in the parade because my family is looking forward to participating in the parade. However, I do not need the banner, nor do I need the track kids. I have my own banner and will have family members carrying the banner." This is after he has found out about this Facebook page and about the nasty things that have been said about him. True or untrue, they're nasty things to say. And so, Ms. Ms. Hallmark cites, cites this email as, as evidence of bullying, specifically the part that states, "While you are free to do as you like on social media, I am also free to respond accordingly." Ms. Ms. Hallmark characterizes, "I am also free to respond accordingly" as a threat. I have discussed this with Councilman Mata under oath, I asked him what the, what the purpose of this statement was, and, and he has, he's testified and told me that he was discussing, he was saying that this email was his response, he was free to respond accordingly in voice's opinion that he had a problem with her being friends on Odessa Whistleblowers. I pressed him further to ask if there was any ill intent or if there are motive to do something. As a result of this, he said no, that the sole basis for that comment was that he was stating his side of the story in the email. The second part, and obviously, on this, on this email chain is also the mayor and Ms. Swanner. And so, this was not a private, private comment, it was to other board members as well. The second part of the complaint is that this information, the fact that she was, you know, friended Odessa Whistleblowers, was somehow shared or, or, with, with some folks via, that, that used that information plus some other information to send emails to Ms. Hallmark alleging that she should be terminated, and that it was irresponsible for her to be a member of Odessa Whistleblowers. To be fair, Ms. Hallmark, when asked about Odessa Whistleblowers, said that she is not a part of Odessa Whistleblowers, she was not part of the founding of Odessa Whistleblowers. She explained that she is members of several Odessa-type Facebook pages and Twitter-paced feeds and whatnot, for the purpose in her capacity as the executive director to keep her ear to the ground on what is happening in Odessa. And so, her- And so, her, she is, she has testified that she's not behind that site and that she did in fact see these, these comments and that she was not okay with the comments that were posted. Nonetheless, nonetheless, the comments were made. It appears that Councilman Mata was very upset about the comments that were made on that page and this email, the first email was a result of that. The second email that we're talking about, I have this exhibit B behind. You will see, there are two, two messages and they purport to be from a lady named Rebecca and a, and a lady named Jamie Foreman, who I understand to be, you know, someone that you guys may be familiar with. According to Ms., Ms. Hallmark, she believes that Rebecca is a fake Facebook account. I don't have subpoena power, I'm not granted subpoena power to gather documentation from Facebook or other social media sites. All I can do is report that that is her allegation and it's a fake site. The, the message purports to, to chastise Ms. Hallmark based upon her association with Odessa Whistleblowers. The second one is again from Jamie Foreman and similarly, this information is, the fact that she's friends with Odessa Whistleblowers is used as a sounding board for complaints that Ms. Foreman has against Ms. Hallmark. I, I asked Councilman Mata whether he knew who Rebecca was, he, he said he categorically did not. I asked him if he posted this, he said, "No." I asked him if he knew who did and he said, "No." He testified under oath that he had no communications whatsoever with anybody off of the council or off that original email chain to discuss Ms. Hallmark's involvement or lack thereof in Odessa Whistleblowers. And so, he's, he claims he has no knowledge as to the source of, of, of these emails or messages and in fact he had nothing to do with these, these persons making these comments. In my investigation, I had, I found nothing to refute that. There's been nothing that ties Councilman Mata to the second set of emails where Ms., Ms. Hallmark is, 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 shall we say, well, they make some pretty nasty comments about Ms. Hallmark. Those, again, those are the two bases that she cites for bullying against Councilman Mata. However, both Councilman Mata and Ms. Hallmark in their, in their statements recounted a very good working relationship with one another with no problems whatsoever prior to these emails. In fact, working successfully on several projects together before these emails came out. Again, I asked her if there were any other complaints that she had against Councilman Mata and she said, "No." These were the bases of the complaints that she had. Finally, the complaints against Councilman Haney. As we recall, Ms., Ms. Hallmark has alleged that Councilman Haney, I'm gonna get, I want to make sure I'm accurate on her words. She claims that Councilman Haney put his face approximately five to six inches away from her face at the Christmas parade on December 3rd, 2022 and said, quote, "I am not fucking, I'm not a fucking councilperson, I'm a councilman and I will only be referred to as such," end quote. And I only say that because I wanted to make sure that there was a direct quote. I don't say that to disrespect this council, that's just what her allegation is. Again, this stems from some of the discussions that were had by this council having to do with the signs that were prepared for the Christmas parade. And Ms., Ms. Hallmark believes that this is a continuation of that same, I guess, problem that some of the council people had with the sign saying councilperson. I, I interviewed, again, Ms. Hallmark about this, I asked her if there were any witnesses to this, to this conversation. She said there were many people around, but that she couldn't point to anybody in specific that, that she could say was a witness. She said that, that it happened in the general area where all the councilpersons and the, and the mayor were, were scheduled to meet before they went on, on their tour. However, I talked to Councilman Haney regarding this and he categorically denied that this happened. And I asked him again if there were any witnesses for him who, that, that saw this, that could say whether it did or did not happen. Now, just to make sure that we're clear on the record, Councilman Haney said he did have a discussion with her about preferring to be called councilman and not councilperson, but that he did not raise his voice, he did not get within two feet of her while he was talking, that he did not call her names or any of that sort. Interestingly also, and I think it's a fact that just needs to be considered, these two people had never met before. Councilman Haney and, and Ms. Hallmark, according to Mr. Haney, had never met before and I cannot, I can't remember what Ms. Hallmark exactly said, but the indication was that they had never met before and they didn't talk again after except in the auspices of, of the city council meeting, which y'all are all familiar with for both times that Councilman Haney identified two witnesses to this, to this conversation, one of which was, and, and I, in fact, will say they are interested witnesses, or at least one of them is. His stepdaughter, her name is Alyssa Deutsch, he, she was there with him. I talked to Ms. Deutsch, Ms. Deutsch said that she was, she was next, right next to Councilman Haney when this conversation supposedly happened. She was within five feet of the conversation at all times and that there were no, there was no cussing, there was no yelling, he didn't raise his voice and that they did discuss briefly the use of councilperson versus councilman, but the nothing out of the ordinary struck her as odd in that conversation. The additional witness that was identified, actually there were two. Councilwoman Swanner was, was present but could not hear what was, what was said, she was a little bit further away, but her husband was standing, was standing about ten or fifteen feet away, Bobby Swanner, and he corroborated exactly what, what Ms. Alyssa Deutsch said, which was that they were, there was a conversation, he did not witness Councilman Haney get any closer than a normal conversational distance from Ms. Hallmark, that there was no yelling, there was no raised voice and that the general basis of the discussion was that he was not, he was not happy that, that it, his sign said councilperson, but that he had not accosted her with nasty language or raised his voice in any way. And so, again, we are left with her allegations, Councilman Haney's denial of those allegations, but in this case we have two witnesses, obviously we have to be honest and one of them is an interested witness, his stepdaughter. However, his stepdaughter and Council, Councilwoman Swanner's husband saw the same thing from different angles according to their testimony and that what they saw was a normal conversation introduction, a brief discussion about the use of councilperson versus councilman, reiteration by Councilman Haney that he would like to be called councilman and that was the end of the discussion with neither person being left with anything remarkable that stood out in their mind as being abusive or threatening. So, those are the allegations that have been made against this council and this mayor. And based on the totality of the investigation that I conducted and like I said, I, I talked to twelve, thirteen people, looked over lots of emails, asked all the witnesses to send in all videos and any kind of correspondence documentation they had to support their claims. I asked for witnesses for, but from Ms. Hallmark to each one of these allegations and from the people that have been accused for each one of these allegations, based on talking to all identified persons, the evidence, there is not sufficient evidence to, to support a finding that Ms., Ms. Hallmark was bullied by the mayor or by Councilman Mata or by Councilman Haney, in, in my opinion.
Thank you very much. This is a presentation, so we have a very little way to be able to ask questions or anything, it's just a presentation, correct?
It's just a presentation, yes, sir.
So having said that, we are on item thirteen. Before, Mr. Sheen, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I've been asked by one of the members of the council to make an announcement and I will do it very general, very generic. Councilman Haney is not in attendance today because he experienced a medical emergency and that's, he made a call, I visited him at MCH this morning, thus why there's his absence and because of hipolos and privacy, I will not go any further into that, but I will tell you that he's doing fine. Item thirteen, seeing that there is no more business before the city council, I have a motion for adjournment.
Salute.
A motion by Councilman Swanner, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mata. All those that favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, we are adjourned.